Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, January 28, 2019. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to remind anyone who would like to speak to any item on the agenda, or for that matter, any item not on the agenda tonight, to fill out a speaker request form. They are in the back of the room. Our city clerk Lynn Fazekas will do what she is in the process of doing now. Get me a copy of the speaker request form, and we will get you on. One of the things we're going to be considering tonight is a little change in how we accommodate folks during public participation. So tonight, we're going to do a test case, so if anybody who is like to speak to the audience tonight, that early point in the meeting, very, very quickly, under public participation, we would invite you to speak on any item, even though it may be later on in the agenda. This should prevent some folks from having to stick around until later on in the agenda. So we'll try that tonight and see if anybody would like to utilize and take that opportunity. That being said, roll call, please.
Jacobson.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Stupija.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our first ward alderman, Dave Jacobson, to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, David. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight, under item C, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Jacobson. Any discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
So moved. Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda is passed as presented. Moving along now, here is the public participation, and anyone who has signed up with a speaker request form on any of the items tonight can feel free to come forward at this time. We'd like you to come to the podium and speak to the agenda. We'll see if Dwayne Brown would like to take advantage of this opportunity. He does, and Dwayne, please.
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. I'll be the test case. There's some considerations for personnel changes tonight. Now, this has been, I have said in the past, ever since the, I believe it was 2013, report IPA, that we were 30 percent overstaffed, that we had too many staff. Now, we haven't had this problem addressed by Mark Bernacki or Anna Rigora, but we now have a city manager who is addressing this problem. It's painful, it's controversial, but unfortunately, it's necessary. And remember, it's not addressing any personnel, job performance, it's strictly physical imbalance. We need these changes that Bill Nicholas has proposed. We need the $1.1 billion budget deficit addressed. This is one way to do it. He is tackling this problem. He's doing what is necessary to eliminate the deficit. And I know how these people feel. You know, in the private sector, I know how it is to be laid off. The company doesn't come to me and says, "You're going to be laid off. How will this affect your family?" You're just notified. So I understand the pain here. But unfortunately, this is necessary to right the ship. This should have been done long ago. I've said in the past, it should have been done through attrition many years ago. You know, I'm not going to be a hypocrite and say that I don't support this now, when I've said this for years in the past, we're overstaffed. Now the necessary reductions are proposed, and I support it. You know, I hope I'm not stoned leaving the building tonight, but it's unfortunately necessary. And it's drastic, I realize that, but we need it. We have a city manager addressing the problem now, and I asked the council, I asked the council to approve this. And I hate to see any cuts in the tourism agreement with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau, but our city manager, he's taking a $30,000 cut in his own salary. He's serious about this. That's what we need. We've kicked the can down the road too long on this. We finally addressing the problem. And I know the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce, the $45,000, I would like to see more money for that, but we have to work within our budget. Same with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation. You know, we've got some amounts set here, and we're living with it, and that's good. And one other thing I'd like to say on the people, people haven't shoveled their sidewalks all winter. We have an ordinance, they need to shovel their sidewalks. The children have to walk in the streets because the sidewalks aren't shoveled. This is a safety issue. I think this needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. You were right at three minutes. Excellent. You've done this before. And we would encourage anyone who is speaking tonight to try to keep it to three minutes or somewhere in that vicinity. Next person who has the opportunity to speak now, if he'd like to, is Brad Hoy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, and city council Brad Hoy, second ward, and I'm here representing the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau and addressing the funding proposal that will be currently discussed tonight. A couple of months ago, I was in a similar situation. Debbie Armstrong, who is our executive director, gave her annual presentation on a night similar to this one, where there was a lot of snow and a lot of ice, and not many people in the audience, but it was a very important issue. And Debbie couldn't be here tonight, she's convalescing after a recent surgery, so I'm going to do the, kind of, point out some of the main points of her proposal that I think really hit home in far as the value of the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau, not only to the county of DeKalb, but also for the city of DeKalb. One of the things that Debbie pointed out, and I also mentioned it in a recent column in the DeKalb County Daily Chronicle, was that, you know, the 98.8 million, almost $99 million, has contributed through travel and tourism to the county in 2017. That's the eighth or ninth year in a row that that number has steadily increased. It is through the great vision of the city of DeKalb that started this organization, and it has a terrific track record over the last 10 years or so. That is a 5.5 percent increase over 2016. There's no reason to think that that will not continue to grow when we get the 2018 numbers in as well. One of the areas that grew is the hotel sales tax. The city of DeKalb acquired $316,000 from hotel sales based on occupancy in 2017. And we, in the presentation, Debbie highlighted that we were at about $178,000 midway through 2018. So that was on a trajectory to even grow in the coming year. We talked a little bit about some of the great attractions that we have here, some of the great things that the Convention and Visitors Bureau were able to contribute to the city and to the county in 2018. Obviously, it was a bicentennial year. Whiskey Acres was highlighted with this bourbon slush. You had the new visitor center at Whiskey Acres. We had the Egyptian Theater named in the top 20 of Illinois attractions. We also had Barbed Wire named as one of the five innovations in the state of Illinois through the state's first 200 years. That didn't happen by accident. That happened through the efforts of the Convention and Visitors Bureau staff, and by pitching these great things that the county and the city has to offer in our, back in our hometown and in our backyard. One of the things that we'd really like to emphasize too, and I mentioned it a couple of months ago, and I'll mention it again, for every dollar, for every penny that is invested by the city of DeKalb and the other municipalities and our other partners through the CVB, that money is matched by the state of Illinois. There are, I know of no other entity in the county or anywhere else where that can make such a claim. So the investment that you make into this organization, it's matched by the state. So, you know, if we decide to step away from that, you are not only stepping away from the money that the city is contributing, but also that the state is contributing. And when you consider that the city recently increased the hotel motel sales tax in the community by 0.5 percent, that means that essentially, you've identified one of the great things that we have going for us is travel and tourism coming into this community. And this is the one organization that is dedicated solely to really helping promote and put heads in beds in this community. So by investing in that, you're also going to be investing in getting more money into the community that's going directly to the city through state, or through the hotel motel tax increase.
Thank you, Brad.
So, again, thank you very much for your support, and I hope that continues in the future for a long time to come.
Thank you, Brad. Vicky Torres, would you like to speak now, Vicky?
I don't know. Brad stole my thunder. Thank you for letting me speak. Brad didn't steal my thunder, he is my thunder. I'm on the board of the Convention and Visitors Bureau also, and I am the general manager of Red Roof Inn and Suites. Taking away the $10,000 will have us lose $20,000, but with the tax increase that you're proposing, it will bring us 15 or 16 more thousand. So with that half percent tax increase, and if you take away 10, that's still an extra $5,000 that we're making with the tax increase. But we will lose $20,000 total if we do cut everything. It's going to be tough. It's going to be tough for everybody, because we need the help of the Bureau, we have an awesome board, but everybody needs to, we need more employees, because it's a hard job for two people to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Appreciate it. Okay, those are the three speaker request forms that were filled out, and so we'll continue on with our agenda tonight. I appreciate the three speakers tonight under public participation. Our next item on the agenda, presentations, we have one, proudly DeKalb. We have a penning ceremony, and I'd like to call on our police chief, Gene Lawrie, to present our distinguished penee.
First, if I could have Kiante and his family come forward. I'd like to say to the council, thank you for this opportunity, for letting us conduct this ceremonial penning ceremony. It means a lot to the individual, but it also means a lot to our community. So it gives us an opportunity, right, what did you want to say? Thank you. It gives us the opportunity to get to know the individual who's being promoted in a different way than some folks might not ever have that opportunity to do. So tonight, I'd like to introduce Kiante Mallett, who's here to be pinned as a sergeant. He has been assuming the sergeant's duties for several months now with the retirement of Sergeant Thomas Pettit, and he's done an excellent job. His work has shown through in many, many recent cases as well, but he's done an excellent job. A little bit about him, accompanying him tonight is his lovely wife Heather, and their recently born son, Landon. And Landon came to us in August, so he's kind of like the new member of the police family. And I always have this weird thing, I know I compare myself to children, especially with children that don't have as much hair as some children do. So I didn't mean that in a bad way, but he's a beautiful child. Beautiful child.
Gene, I think he actually has more.
Well, he doesn't have, it's not maybe have more, he definitely has more. So let me tell you a little bit about Kiante tonight. He is a Proviso West High School graduate out of Hillside, Illinois. His college career was spent at our Northern Illinois University, where he graduated in 2002 with a degree in psychology and sociology with emphasis in criminal justice. His criminal justice career really started with the NIU police, when we took him away. And in 2007, he became a DeKalb police officer. A little bit about some of the positions, he's been primarily in the patrol division, but some of the things he's done and accomplished, he's been an active participant in our domestic violence unit, which does follow-ups on some of our most serious domestics. He's been a field training officer, and that's a coveted position in our business, because you only want the best of the best to take that position to train other police officers. He's a defensive tactics instructor, and I was told tonight, when he and his wife got here, that he's already training a son. I'm not sure what that means, but I already heard he's kicking pretty well, so I don't even want to dive too far into that. He's been a school resource officer, and he also currently serves on the special operations team, which is a special operations or special weapons and tactics team that we have in joint operation with the sheriff's office and other police agencies. He attended the suburban law enforcement academy at the College of DuPage, where he got his basic training for law enforcement. Again, Heather is here with him, Landon is here with him. And we'll talk a little bit about his hobbies. He's been involved in martial arts for nearly 20 years, but since 2009, he's been an instructor in that. One of the most important hobbies, I see what he noted it, and I always ask, I always ask the people attending this to fill out, fill out a little brief bio on themselves, but the most important one he noted is that he loves spending time with his family. And, you know, this police career is tough, especially tough in modern day. And to know the support of the family is there is so huge, and the support of the family here tonight is equally huge. So before we go on to do the oath, do we have an oath tonight? I'm sorry if we did not. It's okay. Before we go on to do the penning, well, excuse me, I wanted to just say a couple things in regard to the mission. I take this opportunity every time we hire someone or promote someone, and it's kind of like the guardrails for me. So when people want to know what it is to make a career good, or what it is to do the right thing when you become a police officer, and now as a leader, when you bear the mantle of leadership, and you're responsible for the men and women who are out there serving this community, and the decisions they have to make, most folks wouldn't like to make. But the four pillars of leadership is really what it's all about. It applies to us, it applies to other walks of life. But in order to keep ourselves on track, the four pillars that I'd ask Kiante to continue doing is this. First, honor is oath. When we look at what we have to do for this community and the significant power we have regarding the decisions we make in law enforcement, honoring our oath is key. The second pillar is focus on the mission. Focusing on the mission is really, really the backdrop to saying, hey, when you take on this law enforcement career, sometimes there's temptations or things that may take you astray. Keep your eye on that mission. Focus on the mission. The third pillar is service over self. And that's really a hard thing right now, especially in this career. Being a difficult, challenging career, sometimes, sometimes not keeping ourselves out of it or keeping ourselves out of it is extremely difficult. But those who can make that sacrifice and serve and understand what that service means to the community and to their oath, they make the difference. And lastly, and Kiante's out well on his way to doing this, that when, one day he does retire and leave our service, that the only thing we ask him in the police department and within our community is to leave us better than you found us. So at this time, I'd like to ask Heather if she'd like to place that pin on her husband. This has got to be the best picture in the world.
Thank you again, council, for this.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, Heather and Landon.
Congratulations.
Not a cute old guy.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Jane. Congratulations, Sergeant Mallett. It's been great to have you here. Heather and Landon, nice seeing you tonight, and thank you for your many associates who have come over and braved this weather to extend their congratulations to you. Thank you very, very much. Okay, moving on to appointments. We have one appointment this evening, and that is the appointment of Evelina Sici to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for the completion of a term through December 31, 2019. Evelina has been a 45-year resident of the city of DeKalb. Her background information was provided in the agenda tonight, in the background information. She has been involved in a number of activities, most recently a dean at Kishawaki College, and I think she'll bring a great amount of viewpoint into the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners. I'd entertain a motion to approve this mayoral appointment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Noriko. Any further comment? Roll call, please.
Stupija.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
So moved. Congratulations to Evelina, who is joining that commission. Now we come to our consent agenda. All items are listed on the consent agenda, are usually enacted by one motion. There is no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Prior to our motion tonight, I'd like to read the items that are proposed for the consent agenda. Minutes of the special city council meeting of December 18, 2019. Minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of January 14, 2019. And I think that December meeting should have been 2018. Right? I noticed that now as I was reading this. Minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 14, 2019. Minutes of the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan Task Force meeting of May 7, 2018. Accounts payable and payroll through January 28, 2019, in the amount of $2,800,987.67. Number six, investment and bank balance summary through November 2019. Through November 2018, thank you. Year-to-date revenues and expenditures through November 2018. And FY 2018 Human Services Funding Fourth Quarter Report. Omnibus approval of FY 2019 Human Services Funding Resolutions, 2019-012, Adventure Works of DeKalb County, Inc., 2019-013, Court Appointed Special Advocates, CASA, 2019-014, Community Coordinated Child Care, 4C, 2019-015, DeKalb County Community Gardens, 2019-016, DeKalb County Youth Services Bureau, 2019-017, Elder Care Services, 2019-018, Family Service Agency of DeKalb County, 2019-019, Hope Haven, 2019-020, Kishawaki YMCA Camp Power, 2019-021, Noguza Saba, 2019-022, Ramp Regional Access and Mobilization Project, Inc., 2019-023, Safe Passage, and 2019-024, Voluntary Action Center, VAC, authorizing human services agreements for human services funding beginning January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019, in the amount of $144,500. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupija.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Motion passes. Thank you. H, public hearings, there are no public hearings on tap for tonight. Item I, considerations. Consideration of personnel changes to address fiscal imbalances in the general fund. I'd like to call upon city manager Bill Nicholas to speak to this item, please.
Thank you, mayor. The topic, as one of the speakers earlier this evening addressed, has had some pretty white currency in the last four or five days. I'm not going to rehearse all of the content that has been provided to you and has been available to the public in that period. I just want to highlight a few things. As the council's well aware, we've had constraints in our general fund budget and projected general fund spending for FY 19. In fact, our general fund reserve is about $1.1 million out of sync with the threshold, the minimum threshold that connects with council policy, which is 25 percent. In addition, our FY 19 budget with respect to the general fund does not totally embrace the difficulty which is posed by rising pension and healthcare obligations. So the new city manager was tasked with addressing these fiscal challenges. These are not easy challenges. The dollar amount is significant. In my opinion, time was of the essence. With each week, the challenge was not being, that was, the challenge was not being addressed, was creating the potential for more substantial hurdles ahead. I have proposed some bold personnel changes. They include layoffs and include not filling some management positions that have recently or will soon be open. The layoffs include Tim Holdeman, our public works director, Joellen Charlton, our community development director, Mark Thorson, our information technology director, and Bob Miller, our assistant finance director. With respect to those vacancies that will not be filled, our economic development planner, Jason Mishnik, who has resigned to pursue another position effective February 1st, would not be filled according to this proposition. Our finance director recently was separated from our Our Finance Director recently was separated from our organization, had held down the position of Finance Director, and that would not be filled. And our Deputy Fire Chief, Jim Zarek, who is still serving and will be resigning effective February 15th, holds a very valued position in the fire department. He is the Deputy Chief for Training. Training is a very important part of our fire service. We have made a concerted effort in recent years to address the ongoing training needs and keeping certifications for our paramedics and others in our fire department. By not filling that position, we will need to address other ways so we can meet the same goals with more people. So there will be people who will remain who will have to pick up the slack. The estimated general fund savings achieved by these decisions on an annualized basis would be a little bit over $1.1 million. But as I hasten to add in our background for tonight's meeting, we have been paying for some of our general operating costs out of other funds than the general fund, as the council is well aware. We bring in some money from the Water Fund, we bring in some money from the Airport Fund, and over time, we brought in some money from the TIF Fund. All these things are not news to the council and to our local residents and businesses. So that savings is, in light of the fact that we're getting some money from other funds, the savings to the general fund is somewhere around $892,000. Additionally, in terms of closing the gap in the reserve balance, the recommended layoffs in the period March 1st through December 31st only raise about $584,000 because, as I proposed, the process here, January and February personnel costs would obviously count against the general fund. And also, there are substantial accrued leave balances that would be paid out at the time of separation. That's our obligation under the municipal code and council policy. So the question arises, and has arisen, and I've been addressing this in recent days in particular, how do we continue to meet service demands? I won't detail all the ways, but I will say that some top managers will have to assume more responsibility. Our Assistant City Manager has agreed to step up, and a little bit later in the agenda, I've asked to make his interim appointment permanent. The Assistant City Manager would be taking on some responsibility in finance and IT as overall supervisor of the day-to-day operations. I would continue to perform the role of Chief Budget Officer and would be helping in that respect. In the area of community and economic development, I would, as City Manager, play a much larger role. I have been working with the gracious help of Joellen Charlton and her staff in renewing acquaintances with developers, with business owners in our community, and prospective members of our business community, and meeting some new people through contacts that we have developed over time. Additionally, our Principal Planner, Dan Olson, and our City Engineer, Zach Gill, and our Chief Building Official, Thaddeus Mack, will continue to provide strong staff support in that area. I wish I could say these are the only cost-saving measures that we need to address. I feel there are more that we'll have to address. And at future meetings, I will be making some additional recommendations for council action. The laying off of people, particularly the very dedicated personnel that we have, is not easy, as the speaker said earlier in the meeting tonight. In fact, it's tough, it's tough most on the families and the people involved. The people stepping up are also going to be asked to take on a significant burden, and they have graciously agreed to do so. If I could see another way, I would propose another way. And there have been many internal discussions to try to find other ways. This is the best I've been able to come up with. This is not a hasty approach. This is an approach which has taken most of my senses for the last 30 days, seven days a week. So I offer with humility and with a commitment to meet your stated objectives, these recommendations that are printed in your background tonight.
Thank you, Bill. Prior to any comments that council members might have tonight, allow me just a minute to remind our council. I don't think our council needs to be reminded, perhaps just reminded some folks in our audience and in our community that as we embarked upon the selection process of a new city manager, and as we honed down through that process and arrived at 20 from 50, and then six from 20, and three from six, and finally decided on Mr. Nicholas, it was very clear from this council that one of the key objectives was to have whoever we hired to know very clearly that a restructuring process of this city hall, of this government, was first and foremost in what we felt as a council as one of those initial priorities. This certainly, as has been suggested tonight by a number of folks and by Mr. Nicholas, this is not easy. It's painful. I am personally taken aback by having to do this, or at least having this recommended by Mr. Nicholas. What I really appreciate is the fact that Bill could very easily, through the city council manager form of government arbitrarily made these moves. However, in making these recommendations for this council to discuss, if we need further discussion tonight, and in the spirit of full transparency, we are here tonight as a council with the ability to speak to any and all of these recommendations as it relates to these personnel. And I commend you, Bill, for doing that and putting this on the public agenda as considerations. I think what Bill needs tonight is some consensus, some feeling moving forward, that we as a council feel that what he has done addresses the fiscal policy situation that we as a council, from my understanding, gave to him as we hired him as our new city manager. Having said that, I would welcome any comments from council. Alderman Fanukin.
As Bill has said, it's never easy to have to do these things, having been on both sides of that equation myself over my long career at Northern. But the four individuals are being laid off. I've had the opportunity to work with each of them, and I want them to know that I've appreciated what they've done and wish them best as we move along. Obviously, they're going to be here for a little bit yet, and I'll have the opportunity to speak with each of them individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Alderman Norrico.
Certainly, the council did direct the new city manager to address our serious fiscal issues, and I appreciate the fact that he has taken that to heart and clearly has been careful in his deliberations on that issue. While it's painful, I recognize the importance and the necessity of these actions. The one that, in both short-term and long-term, I have the most difficulty with is economic development, because in effect, that department is taking a double hit with the adjacent leaving, albeit for a wonderful opportunity, and we wish him the best, and, but at the same time, having two people going who have developed relationships. I will certainly support the council's direction on this, and I do support the city manager. It will be a challenge moving forward for Bill as well as for the remaining city staff and for the council, but realistically, it's our city manager and the city staff who will really have to step up, and there are only so many hours in a day. And I would hope that the council will be realistic in terms of what can and cannot be accomplished with this restructuring. I would be interested in any other council comments, particularly in terms of economic development.
Thank you, Kate. Any other comments? Alderman Stupedia.
I can't say anything at this time about economic development, but I would like to at this time certainly commend the mayor and the manager on this. This effort must have been very difficult, very time-consuming, and I feel that it was necessary, from the material and so forth that I have read, I repeat, it had to be a very difficult decision and not an easy task. I will go along with council as to what the majority would like.
Thank you, Joyce. Any further comment? Alderman Favor.
I would just add that I have enjoyed working with every member of the executive staff. This is truly a budgetary issue, and I obviously wish you the best going forward, and I'm sorry to see that it had to happen this way, but again, I support the mayor and the city manager in making this decision as well. I would just say on the term, on the front of economic development, the city manager has said that he's going to step into that role and be the face of the city of DeKalb. Certainly, we all have an opportunity to support him in that, as well as to also ourselves be the face of DeKalb and work towards economic development.
Thank you, Tony. Alderman Fagan.
These decisions are so difficult to make. I mean, us working with the staff, when I first came in, I can't tell you how easy it was working with the staff, and really, I mean, these are really great people. But when you're looking at going into a situation where we are so financially set, it's just not easy at all on everyone, and of course, as most difficult is of the employees themselves. I wish them the best. I can't say enough how easy it was working with everyone, and especially coming into a role of being Alderman, that you didn't really understand a lot of things, and they were able to bring that up to you and help you go along with our tasks involved. As far as economic development, I have utmost trust in Mr. Nicholas being, like he says, the face of DeKalb. The, I firmly believe that if Bill felt that he couldn't do it on himself, that he wouldn't do it. You know, he'd ask for more help. So with that in mind, I'd go along with the city manager on his direction.
Thank you, Pat. Alderman Jacobson.
We've had this discussion for a few years, and it's interesting to see, again, when push comes to shove, the reality that we knew where we were headed and where we're continuing to head. It's unfortunate that, again, when you break it down to the people level of reductions in force, especially when they're good staff, that it's a very difficult decision. But the reality that we face is that even with this reduction in force, it only buys us a short amount of time to get back until the natural increases in costs and the natural increases in our contracts will eat up all of those savings and more. So I think it's important now that we are at a baseline and we are at a point where we can look forward, at least as a city, as to what our planning looks like. Again, questions as to who's going to run these operations, who's going to run our economic development, what is the long-term solutions to those things, I think are important, both for this council and the next one, that will soon be seated here in a couple months. I would urge the council to start that planning now, to start looking at that visioning and saying, well, we expect our city manager to step up into that role right now. The reality is, to build any organization around one person is not always the best organizational development tool. We've had that issues at our, in our department levels with our chiefs and other things, that the last councils have taken such care and time to put in a transitioning process and to put in the training of some of our more junior-grade employees to be able to fill in, not only for those roles in the interim, but eventually assume those roles as people transition out through the natural retirement process. So again, I think it's important now to start looking at those things, to start understanding once we get, once the cuts do go into effect, to see where we may need other bodies moved around in the organization, because again, the reality that we look at is in a year or two, we're going to be looking at a situation where even without a significant amount of bodies in management, we're going to be pushing up against that same old, age-old equation, raise taxes or cut costs. And again, this, our hand was forced at this point to understand the cuts that we're being forced to make and understanding the realities of why those positions were here and how they were sold to us, and how vital they were to our organization. Again, economic development, public works, these are getting down to our core competencies as a city and what we provide to our residents. And at some point, the equation that we're going to be faced with is additional very deep core competency cuts, and I think it will put this move that the city manager is making is certainly something we would not have seen under the last either mayor or city manager. And I think that in stepping up and facing this reality, again, it's hard, it's hard for us, it's hard for staff, it's hard for the staff that is going to have to assume those roles and see friends have to leave the building. I mean, it's a difficult process, and that's the reality of it. But when we're going into negotiations, when we're talking about the future of our other employees here and our contracts, again, I think this certainly flies the flag of things are difficult here and things are going to need to change organizational-wide. It's not a few management positions that can go away that will solve all of our budgetary issues. It's not cutting a few line items here and there and those problems go away. Those problems continue to creep on us year after year. Those problems continue to creep on us year after year. And at some point, I think, organization-wide, we're going to have to reassess what we're doing, how we're doing it, and how we can continue to deliver those services to the residents at a value. And again, difficult decisions are going to need to be made. This is the first of many, so.
Thank you, David. Any other comments?
You know, one of the things, when we hired Bill, I said to someone, you know, he's going to hit the ground running. Well, he certainly has. I think just in the short time, the 30 days or so that he's been aboard, I think not only has he made these, some bold moves, but I think we're going to continue to see some bold things ahead. Not all of those will deal with cuts. Some of those will be dealing with how we take what we have in this building, in our departments, and how we become more efficient, more effective, how we identify some of the folks who can step up, some of those junior managers, as I think Bill mentioned. So I appreciate the comments. Bill, I think the direction that you are getting tonight is that we are unhappy to see you have to do these, but we understand, and you have our backing. We have your back as we move forward.
Thank you. Okay, let's move along. Item J, Resolutions. Resolution 2019-001, authorizing an FY 2019 Tourism Agreement with the DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $50,000 for tourism activities beginning January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. Motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Stupedia. Prior to discussion, I'm going to let Alder, City Manager Nicholas to address this item.
Thank you, Mayor. The three agreements that are before the council tonight were up for consideration at the last regular meeting, and I was asked to meet with the executive directors of the CBB and the DCDC and the Chamber, which I did. And I will note, the recommendations that I have made in the background would require an amendment of the resolutions, because in each case, I have recommended something a little less than what was before the council at the last regular meeting. So there'll have to be some action on the part of the council, if you are so inclined to do that. With respect to the Convention Visitors Bureau, I had a talk with Debbie. She was very gracious, as were all the executive directors. This recommendation I'm making is in light of, I guess, broader thinking, not just about what the CBB is doing today or tomorrow, but generally, the funding from Publix for the CBB. The city of DeKalb has been the key beneficiary of the marketing, but also one of the key supporters. And we're happy that our dollars are matched by the state of Illinois. Obviously, the state of Illinois is also a supporter. We have given, in the last nine budget years, a total of $425,000 to the CBB. Debbie and I talked very frankly. I explained to her, I'm not sure how you can claim every visitor that comes to the city of DeKalb, and I'm not sure how you can claim everybody who goes to the IHSA. They don't have stamps on their arms or their foreheads. It's very hard to do. And so the average for the grants from the council in those last nine budget years has been about $50,000, which is what they had asked for. I recommended a grant of $40,000 for the reasons that we've been discussing here tonight. I think that's fair, considering what we are able to do in a partnership with CBB.
Prior to any discussion from council, is the resolution that I read, is it correct?
I had to bring forward, it is, but I had to bring forward the resolution that was heard on first reading at the last.
I see.
Or it was heard, it was announced.
So any action tonight would be amending?
To amend, to, in the amount of, if you choose to amend.
I see.
Or you could choose to vote as it was originally presented.
Okay, having made that clear, any comment? If not, would the, the motion was made by Alderman Fanouken, is that correct? Did you make that motion, Bill?
Last week, or there's, or tonight, yes, I did.
Who made this motion?
No, I did tonight, yes.
Just tonight? And then Joyce? So would, in making that motion, are you agreeing to the adjustment down to $40,000?
Well, I think, if I'm correct, Jerry, I think what we need to do is somebody would have to offer an amendment to that to lower the dollar amount as requested by the city manager.
Okay, very good.
And then we could vote on that, and then on the amended motion in total.
Okay, so your motion basically brings this onto the table for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is anyone disposed to make a motion to amend based on City Manager Nicholas' recommendation?
I would make that recommendation. I would move to amend to change the grant to $40,000 to the CBB.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Fagan. Any second to that?
As much as it pains me to do, I will second that.
Alderman Fanouken seconded that. So now we have a amendment, a motion to amend the original motion of $50,000 to DeKalb County Convention and Visitors Bureau to $40,000 based on City Manager Nicholas' recommendation.
All right, Jerry, if I could, I'd like to ask Brad Hoya a question, and maybe if he'd like.
Brad, you want to come up to the podium, then?
Brad, I know how important the grant is, and I'm fortunate that the city's most likely going to lower it here. But I know that you also get some private funding, and can you use that private funding to help match those state dollars?
Correct.
Dollar-for-dollar?
Yeah.
So if an individual, in light of our action tonight, wanted to help stay some of that damage, they could make donations to the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Absolutely. And in the packet, when we presented during our annual presentation a couple of months ago, one of the things that we highlighted was the organizational assessment that was made by Bill Geist and associates that looked at, again, enhancing our funding opportunities, not only through municipalities, but then also through private donations and five, private partners. So we are moving in that direction, and we will, it's a very important organization. We deliver a lot to the community, and we need as many friends and partners as we possibly can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Any further discussion on this amended motion? Amendment motion.
Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman, favor?
I'll just add, the reason that I've, that I've made the amendment is not, you know, that I don't think the work that the CBB is doing is not important. Again, it's just part of the belt-tightening that we're doing. But I will thank my fellow Aldermen for pointing out that donations can be made. I appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Roll call on the motion to amend, please.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
That amended motion passes. Do we need to do any further on that motion now, on that resolution?
Jerry, I believe it now needs to be passed as amended.
Okay. Would you make that motion, Bill?
I already have.
Okay, you've already made the motion to, to move forward on this as amended. It's been seconded by Alderman Stupedia. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, it might be more expeditious if, if the council is inclined to amend the next two resolutions, that the main motion might include the amended number or, or not. It's up to the council's pleasure.
Are you suggesting we take item number two and item number three in tandem or separately?
Separately, but you could say in the, in the first motion, a different amount, if you so choose.
Oh, I see. That's, that was my reason for asking that question initially.
Then we don't have to work backwards.
Okay. So would the, would the council be comfortable with that, that we change the number in the resolution that I'm going to read to you? Or would you prefer to do what we just did?
Put them all together.
Okay, we'll put them together, then.
No, I think, I think that Bill's still suggesting that we do them separately, but I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2019-002, and in the amount as recommended by the city manager of $35,000.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan, that we approve this resolution with the new number of $35,000. Is that correct? Good. Roll call.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Result, number three, Resolution 2019-003, authorizing a funding agreement with the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation in the amount of $35,000 for economic development services beginning January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. Motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Stupedia. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion at this point, that we take the next three resolutions, the three appointments, and do them in an omnibus form, please? In other words, do all three in one motion.
Was that your second, David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we take the three, the next three items that I am going to read in omnibus form. It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Jacobson, that we take these in omnibus form. And let me read those to you, please. Resolution 2019-025, authorizing the appointment of Jeff McMaster as fire chief, effective February 1, 2019. Resolution number five, 2019-026, authorizing the appointment of Raymond Munch to Assistant City Manager, effective February 1, 2019. And Resolution 2019-027, authorizing the appointment of Andy Rye to Street Department Superintendent, effective February 1, 2019. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Congratulations to Jeff McMaster, our new fire chief, Raymond Munch, our new Assistant City Manager, and Andy Rye, our Street Department Superintendent, effective February 1. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. Number seven, Resolution 2019-028, authorizing a retail tobacco store license for the Smoke Shop NIU, Inc., located at 18 West Lincoln Highway, Suite 3. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any discussion? Bill, would you like to speak to this item?
Just to mention, as I did in the background, that this is similar to what we did on January 14th with the Roman Smoke Shop. We have, again, an existing retail tobacco store that is under some proposed new ownership. Your approval is recommended. There are some conditions in the background memo from the city attorney, and the payment of a license renewal fee of $3,511.
Any further discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Did you vote yes, Kate?
Yes.
Okay. So moved, thank you. Resolute, number eight, Resolution 2019-029, authorizing the city manager to sign loan application forms and supporting documents on behalf of the city to apply for funds from the Public Water Supply Loan Program through the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency in an amount not to exceed $1,700,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupedia, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? If not, City Manager Nicholas.
Yes, Mayor. I believe the council may have been briefed on this some time ago, but the Public Water Supply Loan Program is very generous to communities such as ours, and a very reasonable rate for loans, and the, the money that we're looking for would help us replace water main in Tilton Park area and elsewhere. So we need a person who is designated as the signatory for the city, and that would usually be the city manager, and I recommend that we proceed in that fashion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fagan. Verbic.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven eye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, Resolution number 2019-030, authorizing a professional services agreement with B&amp;F Construction Code Services Incorporated for the provision of plumbing plan review, inspection, and related services. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fagan, seconded by Alderman Noriko. Bill, would you like to speak to this item?
Just very briefly, B&amp;F- Just very briefly, uh, B&amp;F Construction Code Services has been providing plumbing inspection services for the city of DeKalb for a number of months and their entry on the scene was prompted by the withdrawal of H.R. Green from a contract that we had had with them previously. We went out with an RFP to establish a more permanent situation and that was done in December. The proposals were received a couple of weeks ago. There were two bidders, Safe Bilt of Park Ridge and B&amp;F Construction Code Services. We evaluated the proposals on two bases. One was the price, obviously, and the other was, uh, the experience we may have had with uh, either one and we've had experience with both. On both counts, uh, our staff felt that, that, uh, B&amp;F Construction Code Services was the preferable company to go with and on the price point, which is always important to us, uh, they were bidding a show up, uh, time basically of four hours, a minimum of four hours, which knock their, their per hour price out, out of the park. So we, uh, we, we, uh, without reservation, recommend the B&amp;F proposal.
Thank you. Any discussion? So, uh, roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number ten, resolution 2019 dash zero three one, authorizing the transportation improvement program for federal fiscal years 2020 through 2024 for the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Bill, would you speak to this item?
Just briefly, this council, previous councils for thirty years have been working with the FAA to, and IDOT to, uh, enhance the services provided at our airport and one, one condition of, of that is to create a five-year transportation improvement program. And, uh, each year, we can make changes in that, but we have to go through a series of hurdles at that state and federal level. And, uh, what's before you tonight is the most recent TIP, I'll use the acronym, TIP Plan, which is for 2020 to 2024. There are some projects involved in that which we hope to accomplish, which include some runway and taxiway repairs, some new instrumentation that, uh, we have talked about for a number of years, which, uh, we're, we're within, we can see, I guess you'd say we're within striking distance of that point where we will be able to get larger planes on a regular basis. We're not there yet. Uh, we still have to go through a couple more hurdles. This is one necessary step to get to that point. So we recommend your approval.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number eleven, resolution 2019 dash zero three two, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters from Badger Meter Incorporated and Core and Main in an amount not to exceed $70,000. Motion, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupedia, seconded by Alderman Norrico. Bill, would you like to speak to this item?
I just want to say we've been using the, the meters and the, the radio transmitters from these two companies for quite a while. Uh, they've been working very well. To not proceed to use these companies to, to fill our inventory, so to speak, would be like, um, moving from a Ford to a Chevy. It's not a good step to take at this point. Uh, we're, we're recommending that we proceed, uh, with the purchases, which involves your waiver of the competitive bidding, uh, requirement. And that will take a super majority, I believe, two, two-thirds.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number twelve, resolution 2019 dash zero three three, ratifying an intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County pertaining to sales tax sharing and a memorandum of understanding relating to emergency telecommunications. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupedia, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Bill, would you speak to this item, please?
Yeah, I, I'm definitely not going to read through all this again.
Right.
I, I thought though it was useful to have this background so that you and members of the public could see the process that we've gone through to this point. Uh, in fact, the city council conditionally approved this particular IGA on September twenty-fourth, 2018. And at that point, partly maybe because of the, the, uh, press of events and the, uh, city manager search and, and other, other reasons, uh, the ratification was postponed. Uh, before I, I get to the recommendation, I, I want to say that, uh, Alderman Jacobson and, and Mayor Smith performed a, a very, uh, big service to our community by negotiating this and I want to thank, uh, their counterparts with, uh, the county of DeKalb, Mark Petrowski, the chairman of the board, Gary Hanson. Together, those four and others, uh, were able to wrestle with some very detailed history over many, many decades and were able to come out with what's attached to your agenda tonight. I want to also thank Dean for his, his assistance throughout. There is one other point which I should make note of. At the time, in, in the fall last, this past year, uh, as this was conditionally approved, there was a consideration about the, the possibility of a partnership between DeKalb County and, and our, uh, city of DeKalb with respect to police radio improvements. And it was thought that the IGA would need to be amended somewhat to address that. Since that time, Chief Lowery lacking no initiative and County Sheriff Roger Scott also lacking no, low, no initiative, yeah, no initiative, got together and created a memorandum of understanding that the county board has already ratified and the attached resolution affirms that MOU and that becomes part of the ratification step you're taking tonight. And it's all good for us in terms of our, our telecommunicating ability.
This was certainly a long process. I think Alderman, or Jacobson can certainly attest to that. Uh, great collaboration ultimately on this and, uh, I appreciate all the background information, Bill. I think it, it suits it pretty well. It's been moved and seconded that we, uh, entertain, or that we approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Stupedia.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, move along to ordinances. This is, if you recall now what we're, if you, no, you should not recall, what we're trying to do in the agenda now is to move some of the ordinances up with second reading, the ones that are, require a second reading first, and then we go into ones which have first reading. Uh, and I think it will make it easier to understand, certainly easier for us as we decide what we want to do. So the first one, ordinance 2019 dash zero zero two, authorizing a zoning map amendment from the High Heavy Industry District, that's H1, to the PDI Plan Development Industrial District, an approval of a planned development preliminary plan for a community solar garden to be located along the north side of Gerler Road, approximately 500 feet east of South First Street, Sunvest Solar, Inc. This is our second reading. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Stupedia, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. Bill, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, just might add to your, uh, opening remarks on this point, Mayor, that, uh, the other reason for second reading at the top is to accommodate those who've been through the process up to the first part.
Right.
And, uh, and tonight, I believe Mr. French is in the audience. Let's see, yes, and he was here last time as well. Uh, Mr. French of Sunvest Solar, uh, as you know, has requested your approval of a couple of things, a zoning map amendment that would, um, allow the development that is portrayed on the screens. Also the approval of a plan development preliminary plan and what's envisioned on that plan is a little over thirty-six acre site on the north side of Gerler Road, about 500 feet east of the intersection with South First Street. The parcel would be divided into three lots with lots one and two, which is about 26 acres, containing a two megawatt community solar garden with another lot, Lot Three, which is about 10 acres reserved for future industrial uses. Uh, at the request of Alderman Fagan, we, we, uh, looked to see if there were any neighbors and, or others who would have opinions. Uh, we did, I believe Joanne did talk with the, uh, person who owns the property and kind of the cutout on the west side of this parcel and their only concern was that this wouldn't, there was some reason why this wouldn't go through. They're very happy with the idea that in their backyard is going to be a solar farm, basically, and not something more onerous that might fall into our industrial zoning. And so they seem to be content with council action. If you so choose to approve this ordinance on second reading, we recommend that you do.
It's been moved and seconded and now we have discussion. Alderman Fagan.
I'd like to thank, uh, my fellow Aldermen for not waving a second reading on this so I could have anyone come to me for pros and cons on this. I have not been reached out by anyone on this and I do like to thank you again for giving the opportunity to my people. So, um, I'm going to vote yes for this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
Norrico.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Eight eye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Ordinance passes. Okay, the next two ordinances are first reading ordinances. The first one is ordinance 2019 dash zero zero six, amending chapter two, city council. This is first reading. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. And before we have any discussion, Bill, would you like to make a few comments on this?
Just want to say I, I walked the reader through the more substantive proposed modifications. There are some housekeeping changes as well. And the mayor said at the top of the meeting that, uh, a number of these changes relate to the process for public comment at public meetings and so I, I trust you've had some time to look at those. Uh, in addition, there are some things that have been in the code for some time. Uh, there is a, a mention of a quarterly discussion, planning, and vision meeting. I don't know that that's been done, uh, but, uh, it, it's your pleasure, but if you feel that that's not something that's likely to be done, then we could eliminate it or we could just leave it in there. Uh, there's some language imposing penalties for council members who don't attend meetings. Uh, council, to our knowledge, has never utilized that language. Uh, it's another thing we, we could address tonight or, or in the next two nights before the council. There are, um, some references also to, uh, the way we, the process with respect to Robert's rules of order, uh, under our home rule authority and, uh, if you would like to go into that in a little more detail, I'll defer to the city attorney on that point.
We may have some discussion on this. I certainly have a couple of, uh, thoughts. As it relates to eliminating the discussion, planning, and vision meetings, I'm a little reluctant to eliminate that, although I will say that after having learned, after having been mayor about a year, that we were supposed to have been doing that, um, my thought was is that we have, I think, done a fairly good job, Bill, of utilizing committee of the whole meetings, discussing things that we perhaps would be discussing under, planning, visioning, et cetera. Whether or not we've accomplished that, I, I, you know, it's probably up to more people than, than myself to determine that. But, but that one I would, uh, I would like to perhaps hear whatever, what anybody else has to, to say on that. And, uh, so with that, I'll ask for any comment. Alderman Favor.
To me, that was also the one that I was going to speak most to is, um, I don't believe that we need to do a quarterly meeting. Um, however, um, I, I think a, a discussion, uh, of, you know, kind of a discussion on the, the future of the city, allowing public input. I, if it could be moved to either, as you suggest, potentially through a cow, um, once or twice a year, I think it would be good. Um, I don't know where we're going to go with our strategic, you know, our, our strategic plan and value, you know, our, our core values and things, but I think, again, that's a good, a good forum to, to look at what we're doing and making sure it's aligning. If it's not aligning, we need to make changes because I, I don't like, you're not moving, you know, moving in a direction that isn't to what we've, what we've agreed upon. So, um, I like the idea of keeping them. Again, once or twice a year, I think would be a good opportunity.
Okay. Alderman Norrico.
I have a question for the city attorney. Um, while we haven't, uh, and I'm not proposing that we impose financial penalties if someone doesn't come to a meeting or meetings. Is there anything in the city code that addresses the issue if an Alderman just routinely isn't present in a meeting? I mean, is, is there a mechanism to, I don't know, sanction that individual in some way?
This, uh, is the mechanism that is in the ordinance. Uh, outside of that, there's not a mechanism. It is not something that has, uh, that we can find ever been used by the council.
Uh huh.
And it's something that is, um, incredibly uncommon to utilize. So as we're going through chapter two, we were looking for provisions that, uh, either weren't being adhered to or were not in regular use that, uh, seemed a little bit superfluous at this point. But if you sought to have such a provision, that would be it.
Well, and, you know, I, I don't think we have an issue and in some ways, the voters would speak if a, um, council member wasn't representing them. Um, I was just wondering, you know, if there was anything. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Jacobson.
The discussion, planning, and vision meetings came out of the last council and I was the, the one that pushed that onto the agenda. Again, I, I think in undergoing a few of them over the time that we've been here, we did have a couple Saturday meetings, we did have a couple of these breakout sessions that were several hour meetings to discuss, again, some of the more pie in the sky understandings. Well, again, the council... Well, again, the councils and the agendas are very specific and very focused on the tasks at hand. I felt it was important to spend time in looking at, again, what the future looks like and discussing some of those big-picture items, whether they be your strategic planning, whether they be your visioning, whether they be your understanding of what you want your neighborhoods to look like, what you want your services to look like over time, and giving the council the ability and time to have those free-flowing discussions, again, where it's not dictated by a two- or three-hour meeting, where it's not able to be put off by having very large agendas that we have to tackle here. Again, the goal was, A, both to have that amount of insight and vision and leadership time, and have the ability to just spitball, to get out there, to have ideas, to get out and have, we've had facilitators that have come in and helped us better define what the council as a whole wants to provide its staff to direction. And again, I still don't feel that a COW or a council agenda can accomplish that correctly. And again, while I can see that quarterly may be too much, I would say if we do remove them, or if we decide that it's not something we want in code, to have them at least a couple times a year, to have them at least once a year, to get out there and have that ability, again, to set direction for staff, to have them understand what we believe as a city council, or what the city council believes as a city council, and to allow the time, again, the interpersonal time amongst council members, which, again, I think is very limited in meetings. We show up every other Monday to do the work at hand, or out the door as soon as the meeting ends. There is great benefit in having a cohesive council that understands one another, that respects one another, that understands the basis and understanding of where one another come from. I feel a lot of those relationships that I've made with especially this existing council have come from things like IML, where we had that interpersonal time, where we had that time away from the office, so to speak, to get to know one another and to get to learn about one another, understanding the tremendous cost in doing that in dollars at a time when we're cutting back. Again, a local weekend get-together for a few hours that the public's invited to sit in and provide their conversation, and to provide, again, we've had lunch at them, we've had breaks at them where you can sit and talk and have that conversation, is a very low-cost, very low-impact way of not only keeping your agenda items down, but providing that in your personal, providing your direction to staff, providing all those benefits at the cost of a few hours of the council, which I don't think is unfair or unreasonable.
Yeah, and I think especially now since we know we're going to have a couple of new council people coming forward on this city council, and I agree with you. I think the IML meetings that I've attended have been just excellent, the fact that we've been able to chat a little bit. You know, we had the one strategic planning meeting at the library. I thought that went very, very well. And so would council feel comfortable if, at Dave's suggestion, that maybe we move these back from a quarterly basis to semi-annual? Would that make sense? Alderman Verbig?
I completely agree. I would like to require that council engage in a retreat at least once per year, and we could certainly start that in June after this next election, and certainly I can see that it would be more than once per year, but I completely agree that it would be on a different day, perhaps a different location, and ultimately critical to how we function. Also, I would say that with regard to committee of the whole and regular agenda structure, that what I found initially, and what I've seen in the most recent past, is a rush to get an item on the agenda. I really think that with longer-range planning and through the leadership of our city manager, that we should be able to engage in those discussions, including the public, in workshop form in our committee of the whole, as we're considering these, perhaps with a little more time for council members to speak with our constituency, and I guess discuss it amongst ourselves without this rush or pressure, and whatever language we could put in or include that would help us stick to that.
Any further comment? Alderman Jacobson?
I would also, I forgot to mention, again, you have, as a city council, several outstanding and ongoing plans that we've invested significant amount of both time and community time and money in, whether that's your comprehensive planning that we still have to tackle, whether it's your strategic planning, your land use planning, your standards, all those things. You have your Antiglen North Plan, you have your Downtown CBD Plan, you have all these plans that several people often get frustrated that once they're complete, and once that effort is complete, that it gets shelved, and that it doesn't feel like the city is actively working toward those goals anymore, that they were, an effort, an effort was done, it was finished, it was drafted, the consultant finished their work, now what? And again, these, one of these meetings a year could be dedicated to going through those things so that you have the ability, as a council, to see those through and to see what progress is being made on those, because, again, there is a lot of progress being made on them. They're not shelved. I know the gene is working through his police plan, I know FIRE has their own plan, I know Public Works is working through their plan, but to get those updates, to understand what's going on, to tackle what still needs to be done, and how to focus those efforts, again, if you dedicate those meetings and have some sort of format and identity to them, I think it adds both to the involvement and enrichment of the council members, and pushes that ball forward for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that? I think our discussion tonight will give you enough fodder, if you will, to make a few changes on perhaps what you've heard. I'm going to suggest that we do not eliminate the discussion, planning, and visioning meetings, and we may want to put in there that they be held at least once, if not twice, yearly, and that they, that a consideration of a retreat process is put in there. Does that, does that pretty much give you enough information there? What about the public participation portion of this? Are we comfortable that the public participation at the very beginning of the meeting, and as virtually the sole place where a member of the public would be welcomed to make comments on anything that we would be discussing, either during that meeting or at any time? Any thought on that? Alderman Fanouken?
Well, just, you know, let's say we have, like, let's just say tonight that somebody wants to, had wanted to speak to this item, and we would have heard that, you know, some time ago, and, you know, could have gotten lost in the shuffle of their comments. That's my one concern, and I'm sure Dean's reviewed how that fits in, you know, overall with the Open Meetings Act, so there's no issues there. I think that's just my concern about would somebody speaking at the beginning of the meeting, comments get lost in the shuffle as the meeting went on.
Okay.
But again, I think that we can go ahead and pass this on first reading tonight, and come back then in two weeks to review with any changes that Bill and Dean may suggest.
Yeah, that certainly makes sense to me. I don't think we want to even consider waiving a second reading on this tonight, but that's my thought. Alderman Noriko?
I would hope that some of the citizens who we do hear from relatively regularly would feel comfortable, you know, contacting either the mayor or one of the council members to provide some feedback on the public participation issue, whether, you know, they would feel that their comments would be heard and, you know, at least considered.
Yeah, Alderman Verbig?
And I think that's the value of not rushing agenda items, is that if they are out there and they're fully discussed during our committee workshops, committee of the whole, that there will be that opportunity for the public to hear the presentation from staff and to fully digest those items. I think that your meeting efficiency is important, and, you know, certainly for us, we've discussed it a few times, that, again, we all work better in a more reasonable time of night, and I think that, you know, but we do owe it to the public to have that discussion, allow them to be informed, and to that extent, would we consider going back to how we used to have a press release day? Our city manager would meet with the press, would talk about some items upcoming on the agenda, give the public more of an opportunity to hear about those things, but I don't know when we stopped doing that, but would that be a possibility?
Thank you. Any other comment?
Mayor?
Yeah, Alderman Favor?
Along the same lines, I would love to hear from the public, get their feedback. Perhaps someone might want the option to be able to speak to an item when the item is presented. So, yeah, I would certainly like to hear feedback on that so we can...
Yeah, and as I would, and I've, you know, other than one person who suggested that if somebody is late to a meeting, maybe they wouldn't be able to speak early on. On the other hand, I do like the idea, and I've talked to Dwayne tonight a little bit and a couple of other folks, that I think even most of our public, they would like the idea of being able to speak to something that is item number 11 on the agenda tonight, for example, instead of having to wait here to make their presentation early on. So I think what I hear council saying is that we would solicit our residents and citizenry to give us their thoughts on not only this particular provision, but some of the other items that city manager Nicholas made in his summary. Bill, do you have any comment, or?
No, these are all the ideas. We'll bring them back to you at the next meeting, and we'll highlight those changes so you know what we've been working on.
Okay. Yeah, Alderman Fagan?
I just do want to say, I mean, there's some good points that are brought out here, but I think we're also looking at streamlining the meeting, so that we're not here till 11 or 11:30 at night. So, I mean, it will be a give and take, but, I mean, we do want to make sure that, I believe the city manager is trying to streamline the council meetings, so we're not in that position.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we don't have citizens here till 11 o'clock at night.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and a second that we consider this item on first reading. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupeda?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Adai?
Motion passes. Thank you. Let's move along now to an ordinance on which we are being asked to consider waiver of second reading. Ordinance 2019-007, amending the fiscal year-end, December 31, 2018 budget in the amount of $171,669.20 for the remainder of the 2018 street maintenance program with Kern Contracting Company. We're asking for passage on first reading, waiver of second reading. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. City manager Nicholas, any discussion?
Excuse me.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan. First time I ever done that tonight, isn't it, Lynn? Okay. City manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually mostly good news. So we had a major street, series of projects, actually, a street maintenance program, and Kern was the little bidder, they completed the job under budget. When it was time to settle up, we noticed that the line item for such things in the capital fund in the 2018 budget was not loaded, apparently, an oversight, honest mistake, with the dollars that we needed. Some of the money comes out of the capital fund, as you saw in the background, some of the money comes out of other sources. So we're short by about $171,669.20, so we need your action retrospectively to put that money into the right line item so that we can settle accounts. We recommend your approval.
So the, we're...
The resolution is probably the best guide to what you're being asked to do.
Right, okay. We will vote then initially on the first reading of this ordinance?
The ordinance, excuse me.
Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupeda?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Adai?
Motion passes on first reading. I would entertain a motion to waive second reading and move and pass this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Fagan. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Verbig?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Stupeda?
Yes.
Fagan?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Adai?
Ordinance passes. Thank you. Now, reports and communications. Monthly Freedom of Information Act, FOIA summary. City manager Nicholas, if you'd speak to this item, please.
Just, it's something that we're going to put in on the reports on a monthly basis so you can see the activity that our staff devote toward FOIA requests. Of course, it's, we honor them, we believe in the process, but just so you know, it takes some amount of time, and this is all public information, so we will report as probably the second meeting in the month.
Good. Any thoughts or comments on that? Alderman Stupeda?
I just have a question. When, is there a fee associated with this request?
You mean with a FOIA request?
Yes.
You know, I think if there's an extraordinary amount of copying, that as an example, that might be one of those things that we charge for. It has to be a reasonable amount, it's laid out in the statute. What we would be showing is the internal staff hours and then their cost translated into a per-hour cost.
So you're saying then there is no fee to the resident that comes in?
Generally not, generally. It depends on the scope of the request, and if it's extraordinary, and sometimes that invokes another, a cost that we can charge, but normally, we respond to their request in a timely manner. The state statute lays out the amount of time that we have to take to respond.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Pat?
Yeah, I think there was, when I read that FOIA request, if it's a commercial request, there is a charge. Is that right? If it's a commercial benefit, if it's normal resident or for information?
The city manager stated accurately, it depends on the nature of the request, even for commercial. You can have a commercial request that's limited in scope that doesn't have a charge associated with it, or you could have a very significant non-commercial request that could have a charge for copying.
All right, thanks, Dean.
I think...
All right, thanks, Steve.
I think, I think the idea of having a summary like that at our meetings is good. I think it is something that obviously is available on our website now, but I think some people just don't realize what FOIA is, and the fact that, I think what this is going to show is that some of the FOIA requests take in quite a bit of staff time, you know, so. Any further comments? We're going to add an item to the agenda tonight, this will be basically under reports and communications. It was inadvertently left off, and that is to allow our Alderman a chance to provide some communications. So with that, Alderman Jacobson, first ward.
I am reading a text that just came in, that is letting me know that school is now canceled tomorrow and Wednesday for 4/28 schools.
4/28, okay.
So, if you haven't yet gotten that memo, surprise, kids will be home with you for the next couple of days, make arrangements you need to. I also wanted to mention that tomorrow, there was a meet the candidates night for all of the elected officials in the upcoming municipal, that was hosted by DARA, DCPDA. It also has been postponed for the time being due to the weather. Stay warm, stay safe, the roads are crazy out there, the cold that's coming is unimaginable, at least for someone who hates winter like me.
You're in the bed.
I hate it. Stay safe, hibernate if you can, and make sure if you do need to go out, you take proper precautions, you have a cellphone with a fully charged battery, and preferably an emergency kit in your car. The cold that we are going to be seeing is life-threatening, it's not a joke, please don't treat it as such. Thanks.
Before we move on to Alderman Fanouken, I'd like to just sort of tag on to what you've just said, Dave, and that is that through the real understanding of our new fire chief, Jeff McMaster, who had a swearing-in ceremony planned for tomorrow morning, and knowing what the weather was, I had asked Jeff if we could possibly move that immediately following tonight's meeting. So I would encourage folks who might like to stick around and do a very, very short ceremony and see us swear in our new fire chief. And Jeff, I appreciate your willingness to do that.
May I interrupt?
Yeah, sure.
Is your family here, Jeff?
They are.
Yeah, they've just...
Were they just leaving?
No, they're, no, I see Annalisa.
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
You might want to get the kids if they're going to come in, because this is going to happen here within the next five minutes.
Well, Jerry, why wait? Why don't we do it now while we're all still here?
Should we do that?
Yeah.
I think so. Okay, all right. Jeff, if you would come forward here, and we're going to let our city clerk, Lynn Fizikas, swear you in, give you the oath. Hello, McMasters, how you doing back there? Jeff, if you'd like, have your family come up with you. Come on up.
Come on up, man. Brought the whole gang.
That's all right.
Good.
Now, for those of you in the audience as old as I am, what would Monty Hall say?
Come on down.
Come on down, yeah, okay. And Scott's saying, "Who's Monty Hall?" Okay. Come on up. Bill, you might want to make a few opening remarks here, what we're doing tonight, and why we're doing this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very proud to present Jeff McMaster to you. Earlier this evening, the council voted to approve his promotion from interim to full-time permanent fire chief, and it is a pleasure to present him to our city clerk for swearing in at this time.
Please raise your right hand, and after me. Aye.
Aye. Jeff McMaster.
Having been appointed to the position of Chief of the Fire Department...
Having been appointed to the position of Chief of the Fire Department...
In the city of DeKalb...
In the city of DeKalb.
In the county of DeKalb...
In the county of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Chief of the Fire Department...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Chief of the Fire Department...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That's it. Congratulations.
Jeff, yeah, give us the opportunity. Pretty good? Jeff, as you go down that row, Bill, I know you'd like to make another comment.
Just a quick comment. The fire chief as the top of that department organization has a large role to play, but as with all other departments with the city, and the city manager is included in this, we don't do it alone. In fact, there would be no fire department if it weren't for our firefighters, and in the audience tonight, through a long meeting, is Noel, our president of the firefighter's local, stand up, though. I mentioned earlier the fact that we have made it more challenging to meet our training objectives, some statutory, some by policy, in our fire department, because of some of the personnel moves that I had recommended that you approved, and Noel's going to be a key partner in working with us to find the right way to continue to meet those training obligations, and I appreciate his offer to work with us in a collaborative fashion. Thank you, Noel.
Thank you. Congratulations once again, Jeff. Great to have you as a part of our team here, continuing as a part of our team. Okay, Alderman Fanouken?
Well, now it's my turn, I will just add, and what to Dave and the mayor have said, you know, be careful as you're driving, keep your fuel tank above half, that's important, so your gas line doesn't freeze, but be very careful out there, and again, cover all exposed skin, it will not take very long for frostbite to occur. Thank you.
Alderman Stupeda?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alderman Fagan?
No report.
Alderman Norrico?
I just wanted to thank Community Development for their work on the detailed evaluation of the human services funding proposals. I know in the past, the council has looked for that, and I think this year, it really was a detailed process, we got a lot of information, and I can only appreciate that there were many hours behind the summary that we received, so, thank you.
Alderman Verbic?
Just a big thanks to Public Works, Public Safety, all of those out working in these conditions. It's unbelievable what you have to face out there, and just, you know, coming from the sixth ward, thanks a million, it's much appreciated. Also in the sixth ward, when conditions are safe to do so, I'm going to beg and plead with property owners and those responsible for clearing sidewalks in the sixth ward, that many of our residents and our students rely on walking in the sixth ward, so please, as you're able, please clear those walks. Thank you.
Alderman Favor?
I appreciate that comment on clearing sidewalks, that is very important. With the weather, one thing we can add as well is, you might want to increase the thermostat in your home to 72 to 74, just for the next forty, 72 to 74, for the next 48 hours only. And my wife is at home laughing too, because I'm saying this publicly to turn up your thermostat, but with the, with the temperatures dropping as low as they are going to be, your furnace is going to have to run full-time, and you want to get ahead of that before, before the temperatures do start to drop. Also, keep an eye out for freezing pipes, keep cabinets open where, underneath the kitchen sink or whatever, so that the heat from the house can get under there and keep those pipes free from freezing. Thank you.
As my wife and I were driving to church yesterday, we embarked upon, we came upon our city crews working on a water main break, and it was six, I think it was six degrees below zero yesterday at 10:30 in the morning, and again, I just echo what has been said tonight. We can't thank the 15 guys in Public Works who are out there plowing, working on water mains, breaks, et cetera, during this brutally cold weather. So, we thank them, along with so many of our dedicated employees here in the city of DeKalb, going forward. Just a reminder that we do have three or four warming centers in the city, most of those warming centers are open during the day. Our one catch-all, if you will, for anybody needing warming areas during the evening hours is our Hope Haven facility up on Rushmore. Those warming centers have been publicized in the newspaper, they've been publicized on our website, and let's hope that very few, if any, of our residents need to avail themselves of the warming centers. Having said that, I would move to see if our city clerk has anything.
I'll pass tonight, thanks.
Okay. Bill, any final remarks?
Thank you, Mayor, and Alderman Verbic, for your kind words about our operational folks, Public Works and fire and police in particular, and I second what you said. And then, I want to embarrass one more staffer. Jason, would you stand up, please? You've known Jason longer than I have, I don't think anybody is going to protest when I say that he's done an extraordinary job for the city of DeKalb, and we all wish him well.
No, Mayor.
Alderman, Chief Lowery?
Yes, sir.
Chief McMaster?
Warming center information is on the website.
Joel and Charles, in our community relations, community development.
No report.
Dan Olson?
Tim Holdeman?
Just wanted to let our community know that our bus service will not be running on Wednesday, so get out tomorrow if you need to, go to the store and get your supplies, and no bus service on Wednesday, because of the cold.
Very good. And finally, our assistant city manager, Ray Munch.
Just a quick thank you to Mr. Nicholas and the city council for your continued support. I appreciate the appointment tonight, and hope to continue to do good work for the city. Thank you.
It's great to have you aboard, Ray. There being no further business, and there is not an executive session tonight, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting of the DeKalb City Council. So moved. Second. It's been moved by Alderman Jacobson, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? So moved, we are adjourned.